Okay, everybody, so let's open the February 26th Planning Commission meeting. And the first item on our agenda is agenda changes. Does anyone have anything, any changes? That would be a no. Second item is public comment for non-agenda items. No public, no comment, unfortunately. So that leads us right into our discussion of architectural and streetscape design standards that we started, just barely started last week. And we were still on... I guess, looking at setbacks, I mean, we had-
You had done some discussion of, yeah, just to reorient everyone. We're working on 11 of them and you had already talked about, number one setbacks at a prior meeting-
Right, and then permeability last-
Yeah, and so the last time you started talking about the second one, permeability, and front facades, in particular windows, entryways, porches. I don't think we actually got to porches and garage setbacks. And then we wanted to move on to make sure that everything was fine with rear inside yard parking, number three, and then talk about street grid connectivity. So at the end of the last meeting, you were having some back and forth about facades, particularly windows, and what kind of, how big of a blank wall you are willing to look at for buildings on the street side of these buildings.
Right, and we'd thrown out 20 feet.
Yep, the draft, which talks about 20 feet, and that's from some of the other communities that we've been looking at. Maggie hunted that information down. And we had talked about how that actually might be large-
Too long, yeah.
-and that many of the buildings along our main street of 116, and also on some of the side streets seem to have windows much more, and entryways much more together than 20 feet.
I know we talked a lot about Kinney Drug and the big Parkside. I walked by Parkside the other day and noticed that their windows, why the door entrances on 116 are all covered with stuff from inside. And you see the backside of the hot water machine-
Oh, right, coffee area and all that jazz.
So that kind of defeats the purpose. And then Kinney Drug, there, the side we talked about to the right of the building, it's downright ugly. And the windows are so high that they're useless. And we mentioned that already, I know. So, I don't know how to solve that.
Well, this draft does speak to that a little bit with regard to retail establishments and restaurants offering views into the building. So that last sentence talks about minimizing mirrored or tinted and windows blocked by interior or exterior displays. But I think there's, you could argue that those examples that you gave comply with this standard, but just not every window complies with the standard. And so we might want to be, in your discussion, you might want to be specific about, does it have to be every single window, or is it, you know, the bulk, or just some? Yep. In general, this standard is qualitative, with the exception of that second sentence about the blank wall length. That's a quantitative, you know, number. The rest of it is basically saying, have a regular pattern of windows on your street face. Make sure that they're somewhat proportional, and they can be somewhat smaller on the upper floors. But I wonder, Barb, you point out those issues with those two particular buildings. Is it your sense that the Parkside's interior equipment being up against some of those windows, that because of that, that is a poor example that we do not want to emulate? Or are you just noting that and saying, "I still enjoy that facade of the building. It works for me, and this is just an interesting observation." Because I'm not sure, when I look at it, it seems like an attractive building, and it's got a sidewalk in front of it. It sort of does a lot of the things we want it to do. So I wonder if every window needs to be clear through, you know, to view to the cash register or the dining area?
I mean, they are large windows. The downspire windows especially are quite-
Well, especially the ones on the south side, right? Of the building, the south, facing 116.
Yeah, but the others as well are quite large.
They're also underneath, some of them are underneath the covered porch.
Yes, that's the ones.
Yep. But what do you think, Barb? Is it a problem? Is it not something we want to emulate?
Even if I'm aware of it, I found it objectionable.
Okay.
I don't know if the average person going in and out of there would even notice. So...
Is it-
Maybe if they put a picture or something there.
Yeah.
Cover the back of those machines.
Yeah, I think the, I don't know.
Well, the inside of the building doesn't allow for them to put those anywhere else. There's windows everywhere.
Well, and I think it's important to focus on what our goal is, right? So our goal is, in this design standard of permeability, is making the streetscape sort of inviting and making the buildings part of that, and have it feel that you can sort of see into what is happening right up to the front door and potentially into the building too. So, for me, on that face of the building, when I drive by anyways, I guess when I walk by too, because of the covered porch and the other larger windows to the left, you know, as you're looking at the building, where the dining area is, it feels, I have a sense that it is permeable. Like, I can, my eyes go right into the building. Maybe not through every window, but through many of them, and through the doors. And it feels like a decent design to me, but if it's, if you don't agree, then we should-
I mean, we're not going to be able to tell people what they can put in front of the-
Well, that's part of what this last sentence does for retail establishments and restaurants. And that's where I'm trying to figure out whether we want to be that prescriptive, or whether, you know, we want the, we want the goal achieved, not necessarily every window has to meet a certain, that's particular standard.
So, one case in which a retail establishment and restaurant shall offer views into the building. That sentence right there doesn't say it has to be every single window.
No, but I think-
It could be every third window.
I think a zoning administrator reading that would assume that that means every road-facing window.
That's what it says.
Barring any language to qualify that, I think Suzanne would read that to mean, "I need to, I mean, every road-facing window needs to meet that."
I find that's Parkside. As a, building as a whole, at least on the main floor, fairly transparent. Obviously, it changes in the evening when the lights go on and so forth. But it's a pretty transparent building. I haven't gone along like you just described and scrutinized each window. From a functional standpoint, it stands to reason that they've got some things in front of windows in and around where they're serving people.
Well, there could be somebody-
So there needs to be-
There could be somebody in the apartment upstairs who has a piece of furniture in front of a window as well.
Yeah, yeah.
We did talk about that last time, that we need to amend this to be first floor. Right? We don't want, although I suppose a retail establishment on the second, there could be one on the second floor, it hardly ever happens. But I think the intent was to have it at the pedestrian level. You know, where not, not, we don't really care about those upper story windows.
I mean, when it comes to blocked windows, I mean, I find the Kinneys more troublesome because they are intentionally blocked, the lower halves of those larger windows. To the point where, you know, why bother having them at all if they're just going to be blocked with white paper? You know, I do understand they're retail and they need that wall space for, you know, putting stuff.
Although in a case like that, you know, the store layout is one where most of the aisles on that side of the building all run north-south. If the aisles ran east-west and you had a window at the end of every aisle, it would change the whole dynamic, and it doesn't seem like that's a difficult thing to do either, you know? So if someone were-
Redesigning?
Designing that from the get-go, it's different in the other place. In the, you know, you have the cash register and then to your left. But how prescriptive do we become? You know, is kind of the issue, really. I mean, or is this one of those things where there's some nice illustrations that are done as examples of more permeable elevations with some quantitative language that talks about on the first floor, that there's a certain amount of glass or a certain percentage of windows in proportion to the size or surface area of that elevation? That gets really specific.
Yeah, I think that when we get into design standards, number five, which we haven't, don't have language for yet, but it's one that you helped work on, Rolf, we'll see some language from other towns on how much of the building face, what percentage needs to be windows? You know, 60%, 40%, 20%, whatever. So, yeah, I think we'll tackle that. This section is dealing more with just how much you can see to the building and into what's going on in the building, which is slightly different. But, yeah, I think the difference between the Parkside Cafe building and the Kinneys building is kind of illustrative, right? So, one of them, the Parkside, probably 50% of the street frontage on 116 has very large windows that are not obstructed, that look right in on the dining area.
I'd say more than 50%.
Okay, more than 50%. And then that other portion that Barb was noting is a smaller percentage, some of which is under the covered porch, that, you know, you only have partial visibility into the building. But you do have some via the glass doors and that are not, there's nothing obstructing your view through those doors. Whereas Kinney, the only view you get of the windows that are on the street into the building, you actually do have a view into the building-
If you're eight feet tall.
But it's a view of the ceiling and of the ceiling lights, because the windows are so high and the display windows are not being used for display purposes. They're all, they're all just frosted over. So maybe there's a way to look at those two, and if one is decent and the other is problematic, to craft a standard that, you know, has enough flexibility to allow something like the Parkside to happen, but a little bit more stringent so that we don't get another, so that the next Kinney retail establishment does what Rolf said, which is have a little bit more in the way of display windows.
And I think that's a good point, is that if we had this information when Kinney was designed, it would have been easy enough for somebody to accommodate a more pleasing structure. So I think that's what our goal is here, is to give them some guidelines to go on.
Right.
I did some sketching here, just to kind of see what I would find pleasing. And it seems to me like we could take a figure and kind of raise it up under the, say, front facades category, and say, you know, "Front facades shall have 40% for example," is what I found visually pleasing of the facade, you know, linearly. Have a window or entryway, and have that applied to the subcategories where we explain the details about windows and entryways and what should be specific about each one. But personally, I think if we had a window or an entryway on 40% of a road-facing facade, that would give a designer or a developer a pretty good idea of what we're looking for as far as permeability, and also having a pleasing facade that's not just a blank wall.
Is there a percentage that auto-applies to this window gaze design standard that-
It sounds like you'd want to have the windows so far off the ground, too.
Like, there should be a height guideline on stuff?
Right, I mean, you could have 40% of the wall with windows, but they're all-
Right, they're all those, what I call those windows that are often above transom windows that are-
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's part of the appeal of Parkside, actually, is because the windows are so low. I mean, they're like a-
It's much more inviting.
They really are low, you're right.
Yeah, like a foot off the ground.
But it's for the people sitting at the table so they can look out the window.
Yeah, it's because of the nature of the use. Same with deep physical therapy. That building was built very similarly. But it works for that use because their clients have that much more natural light to do their exercises. Makes it a more pleasing place. Whereas Kinneys is a retail establishment, it's a very different concept. But I do agree with Rolf, it seems like they, the Kinneys, have you ever driven by the Kinneys on Shelburne Road, on the Burlington side of Shelburne Road?
Is that where they did those, the display windows?
They have actual display windows, so you don't look into the store through those windows, but you look into what is a display, and they put seasonal displays behind the glass and products and, you know, that sort of thing. I don't, in any case, I think that's more of the kind of thing that these kinds of design standards are looking for, for retail establishments. Either that, or Rolf's example of organize your aisles so that the window allows you to look in, as opposed to the thing that we keep coming back to with Kinneys, are these largish windows underneath the, but that are just frosted.
Yeah. They're not even, I don't think they're even frosted. I think they just put some stuff in there. Paper. Yeah, I don't know what it is.
It seems like it would warrant a line of text in there that said, "Windows shall be no higher than X feet." You know, "They shall be at eye level, shall be visible." If we dictated what the height was, it would, it seems like that's important to us.
Yeah, it's interesting. Just check this again.
I don't recall in the other community's design standards that we looked at, Maggie, that they were that specific.
Right. No, maybe I'll go back to...
But I, so I wonder, I mean, it's always good to have a quantitative measure like that, you know, X height. But sometimes a qualitative standard gives you the flexibility to get, to achieve the goal without completely hamstringing, you know, the designer, the architect, as to how they're gonna-
So a percentage?
A percentage, or just a statement that, about what the goal is for those windows, that they be, that they provide views into the building for a pedestrian, for somebody at the height of a pedestrian, and not necessarily stipulate the height of the window. Because then you have to stipulate, measured from where? Is it the bottom of the window, the top, and all the rest of that?
Or even something like, you know, in the other, to the other extent, "Shall be permeable." Shall be, you know, inviting to a pedestrian or something, and then kind of leave it up to the designer.
Right.
Or, I think, you know, that would be the qualitative extreme, wherein, you know, we could quantify certain things, or maybe find a balance.
Rolf, you're an architect, come on, help us here.
Well, it's, yeah, I think probably some of the things you guys were just saying, you know, number one, a statement that says something about, hey, if you're on the sidewalk outside or you're inside the building, that any kind of window or fenestration is organized such that, hey, people when they're sitting or standing can actually see into the building or see out of the building. I think that kind of statement. I actually think some kind of percentage, especially of a street-side elevation, you know, that's glazed, is not a bad place to go. You're going to probably run into some trouble because there are going to be structures that, you know, say you've got, I don't know, a beer establishment or something, and they're making beer in one part of it. Well, actually, I'm sure there are situations, or occupations, or uses that don't necessarily call for lots of windows. Although, it's always surprising how beautiful a nice beer, whatever they call those things, urn or whatever, you know, can be. But I think some kind of percentage is not a bad thing to potentially strive for. And also, you know, I think making, a little like you were talking about with the Kinneys, you know, those windows are either, they're used for the ability to see in and out, or they're used for display purposes.
That's good, yeah.
So that, you know, that's also listed as, you know, prospective use. I mean, when you so happily interrupted me, I was actually looking at this wall right there. And I figured that wall is about eight feet high, and it's, I think, 28 feet long, this wall. So eight times 28 is the size of that wall. And each one of those windows is probably three by four and a half. So maybe 12 square feet. One, two, three, four, five, six. So 48 square feet, like you were talking about, 48, 40%? Justin?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did I get your name right? Denver, Jesus.
Not even, not even close in the alphabet. It's not even-
I like Denver much better. So six times-
2,400.
So, 2,400, we said, is the total area of that wall. I said eight by 28, so eight by 30. Call it 240. And the windows are roughly three by four, say, so 12 square feet each. So, there's nothing like a good visual example, you know? That's a pretty transparent wall by most standards, I'd say. So 12 times 6 is 48. 48 as a percentage of 240. 50 as a percentage of 250, call it, that's 20%. So that wall is 20% glazed.
12 times 6 is now 48.
12 times 6 is 72. All right then, thank God. So 72 as a percentage of 240 is closer to 30, a little less, right? Yeah. 210 would be, or 220 would be 30%, 33%. So it's roughly 30% that wall. Wouldn't you say the ceiling is about eight feet?
Yes.
Yeah. So that's an interesting illustration.
It is.
That's a pretty, by most, you know, standards, that's a fairly transparent wall. The sill heights of these windows are such that you could hunker a table up against it and sit there and drink a cup of coffee and look outside, more or less. They could be a little lower. So I think you could determine sort of a rough percentage, you know, I don't know. The DRB, of course, has to figure all that stuff out, and poor guys. But like 30, 35%, that's probably not a bad, you weren't so far off.
So what I was picturing was actually linear percentage.
Yeah.
So if there's, I decided, I divided a facade up into sixteenths and said, wow, this is how many windows I would, at least how many windows I would want. And so, but I think that this is probably more, there's probably more windows here than I would necessarily think are required.
Yeah.
But, but an area calculation could be beneficial as well.
Right, and at least X percentage.
And there's nothing that says that all six of those windows couldn't be clustered down here, you know? Which would basically be, from behind Barb's head, floor-to-ceiling glass.
Or a couple of large ones.
And is that something that we want to dictate? Do we, is that okay with us? I mean, I think what we're trying to avoid is blank walls, wall space and industrial-looking buildings.
It's a question of how prescriptive you want to be. And I'd err a little more on the side of being a little less prescriptive and depending on use and... But to give a percentage, I don't think that's, that's sort of a bad thing. Incomulation with some other statements that I think we would want to make.
All right, I have a bunch of notes. Dennis, do you have any countervailing thoughts or reality checks you want to provide?
Well, I know we're all about efficiency of buildings and stuff. I mean, the more glass you put in, I would think the less efficient it would be.
Yep.
Depends a little bit on which way the glass faces. Like, a triple pane glass window facing south in our climate is a net heat gain. In other words, you get more heat coming through that window to help heat your house than you do at night when it gets cold, and you lose heat out. You win more than you lose in a south-facing elevation.
What about during the summer?
Then you want to provide some shade for that window.
All right.
Yep.
So your point is, be careful, don't overdo it, if we have other priorities like energy efficiency?
I mean, I think that's a big thing, efficiency. I mean, a wall, I know Kinney's wall isn't the best-looking wall in the world, but, I mean, the windows above, you could still make a wall look nice, even without windows, I would think.
If those were actual windows, though, on that building, like, you could actually see through them. You know, it's, you're right, it's not the-
Yeah, I mean, it's letting light into the building.
But it's, it's not bad. What?
Can't remember what it's like inside that part of Kinneys. Are there coolers over there, or?
There's quite a few along that whole east wall.
I just think having a retail establishment is going to be hard to keep people from putting stuff in front of the windows.
Yeah.
Well, remember, we are only talking about the street-facing side.
Right.
So it's not like every side of the building-
You should decide they want to be showing something that-
You'd say they want to be displaying, displaying things.
Right, well, that's the idea, as we, yeah, we all know what the idea is. The idea is to have the new development invite people to walk by it and walk into it.
We already have something that they can't put posters and stuff in the windows, don't we?
No, but we-
Signs or something.
We say that those signs in the windows are half, are part of their overall sign allowance. So if they're going to put a sign on the outside of the building and stuff all over the windows, we have to total all that up and make sure they haven't gone over the sign allotment.
Okay.
Okay, do you want to talk about entryways? Because this one, I think, is a little sticky. This one and the next one, porches and entryways.
Right.
So what's happening in the second bullet on page two is, it's talking about non-residential, mixed-use, and multifamily residential structures. Basically, anything that we would normally go through a site plan review. Not a single-family home, not a duplex, but everything else. And then it's saying, all of those kind of structures need to have a prominent entryway facing the street. And that entryway has to include an open porch, a portico, a patio or terrace, and some of these other terms that maybe folks are less familiar with, a gallery, an arcade, or a storefront design. And then it goes on to say that if it's an open porch or a portico- And then it goes on to say that if it's an open porch or a portico, it's gotta be no less than six feet deep and extend along no less than 40% of the facade. Questions?
When we say open porch or portico, patio, terrace, gallery, arcade, or storefront design? Okay.
The idea being, what, what we, we want to have a prominent entryway on the street-facing side of, of these kinds of buildings, and we want that entryway to be more than just a door.
Yeah.
So, it's gotta be, it's gotta have something else going on, some portico, you know, covering over the door and extending a significant distance away from the door cause it's not just, you know, framing the door. It's, it's gotta be 40% of the street-facing side.
So Kenny has it, Parkside has it, 40%? Yeah, Parkside has it.
Kenny, you're saying that blocked off part would be...
Well, if you, if you look at... Yeah, I'm not sure that, this part for sure, and I don't know if that's deep enough to be a...but yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's sort of building on, oh, I should have looked that up, the, the survey we did many years ago on how many, how many buildings in town already have porches, how many?
Yeah, and it also, I think, hearkens to that Virgens site visit where it seemed like many of the buildings on the street, the main street there, had articulation in their entryways that made it inviting and made you want to step up to the door and, and partake of what's, what was happening there, as opposed to the Finney Crossing site visit that we did for the DRB where we walked down that one street where there were commercial buildings on the first floor and residential above, but it was literally a flat face from first floor to all the way up with almost nothing over the door, and it just, it just felt sterile.
Yeah.
But my question is, is, is such a requirement that, having a prominent entryway is part of our current design standards. We're not breaking any new ground there. Stipulating what types of entryways in terms of porches, porticos, those, that's new, and we pulled that from some of these other communities. So, I'm interested in your thoughts on being prescriptive about the types, and then especially on the percentage of the facade that those things should cover. Cause I think 40% is a pretty big slice of the, especially if all you have is a portico above the door. You know, I don't, I don't see many of those that are, that occupy 40% of the, of the facade. Covered, you know, a porch, probably that's not much of an issue, although maybe. But what, what do you think?
Does it depend on what it's being used for? I could see the 40% for a restaurant in the summer with a porch. Having tables out there would be attractive. But if this, if these windows, as Ralph pointed out, were 30%, 40 sounds huge.
Now, that was my feeling too, although then I look at, you know, some of the buildings on our main street, like this building, it's nearly 100%. It's got a porch on the front of it.
I mean, Public House has it, is it 40%? It's pretty darn close, I would say. I mean, the new police station, it wraps around, so that's a little hard to...
Yeah, that's a good example of, of one where the actual street-facing side would not meet that standard, and yet it's a wraparound porch and it looks nice, right?
It looks great.
And it's functional.
Yeah.
So how would lampmen's be, if they were to be built today, you'd want them...
Well, they used to have.
We'd want an entryway up on, on the front of the building, yeah.
I mean, they used to have a big porch here.
Right.
Yeah, it used to be.
Yep.
So that wouldn't meet the standards now?
Nope. Nope. Which can be problematic. The, the National Bank of Middlebury addressed that. When they went in near the post office, their parking lot and sort of principal entrance is on the, in the back, but they put a door on the front so that people walking down the sidewalk could walk right in. I don't know that that building actually would meet this 40% rule because I, I'm not sure that they, I don't think it has some expanded porch or, I don't know, Maggie, it looks like you're scrolling on Street View there, maybe you can tell.
Yeah, maybe a quarter, there's a stepped back, a couple of stepped-back sections, but of the, the front section, may, yeah, maybe it's a quarter that that, that portico covers.
So that's where I'm getting to, is do we want to have a firm percentage, and if so, should it be 40%? Or do we want to leave it qualitative? You need to have a prominent entryway, here are the types that are, that count, and we're not gonna tell you how, how wide the porch is or how, that sort of thing.
So this entryway section uses the, when it's referring to porticos, shall extend along no less than 40% of the facade. And that word "along" makes me think that it's linear.
It is, absolutely.
So if this is 28 feet long here, and each of these windows is two feet, that's a 43% glass. So, as far as the entryway, you know, 40% does seem like a lot to me, even if it is linear. If you picture the front of a, of a home with a porch on it, even if it is like a multifamily place, it seems excessive to have, to have half of it, almost half of it be the entrance.
Yeah, to clarify, that's a good point, actually, Denver. It's not that the entrance itself would occupy that much, but that the, the feature that the entrance is a part of would occupy that much. So, you know, obviously the door is not gonna be that big, but, but the portico associated with the door would be larger, or the porch...
Pedestals, etc.
Yeah, exactly. So another example would be the, I, I agree, by the way, I think it is, I think 40% might be too much. But another example would be the, the new homes, multi, multifamily homes that were built next to Parkside as you, as you walked down Farmall Drive, and those all have full front porches on them, so...
And usable front porches.
Right, they're deep enough that they have chairs and, and so those, those, those buildings are 100%, you know.
Which is nice, but is it a requirement?
Right.
So, um...
We do, we do go give people, this, this section gives people an option. I mean, yeah, you, it shall include, I assume, one of these, an open porch, a portico, a patio, terrace, gallery, arcade, or storefront design. We seem to be using portico and arcade in the same way. You know, I just sent Alex six photographs, four or five photographs, which are...
Trying to bring them up?
Well, I don't know, it might be fun for conversation. They aren't in our town, they're somewhere else. I was actually looking for Virgens, but, cause I don't remember much in the way of covered porches along that streetscape that we walked in Virgens, a little bit, that one on the corner, but mostly it's just a street elevation with maybe sometimes a little indent for a door.
And shop windows, but it is, but it's also a different sort of main street.
Mostly storefront windows is what you saw. And these little images are all from Boulder, Colorado. There's a pedestrian mall there, it's a little like Burlington, so it's, you know, bigger, more urban than our area. But most of them, most of these buildings use storefront design as the category, which, you know, that's how they use, that's what is used there to designate an entrance.
I wonder if we would need to define storefront design.
Well, I think definitely, just like with windows, I think illustrations or illustrative examples are a real help.
And we're going to have them.
Excellent.
Yeah, this, this section in particular needs an, it needs an illustration, for sure.
Or several, you know.
Right. All right, so let me bring that up, Ralph.
I'm gonna, I'm going to...
Sorry, that's sort of a pokey business.
Stick it in my heels when it comes to the depth of...
Yeah?
Porches.
So that one's a little hard to see.
Yeah, but it shows you, there's some recesses along there, but not much. You know, it's basically a storefront facing the street.
There's another one that's a little...
This one's a little easier to read. You know, those are two shops right there with some other stuff above it. You know, mostly glass, actually well over them. But even there, the door is, what do you call it, sort of in the same plane as the storefront windows.
Right.
No overhang, well, a little bit of an overhang on that cornice, and that's about it. This one has a little inset on a corner, but there wasn't a lot of, you know, it was interesting, there wasn't a lot of in and out, and there wasn't a lot of in and out in Virgens either. It's my memory. I may be wrong, but...
No, I agree with that.
Ah, you screwed it up for us.
We're unplugged.
The others are a little hard to read, I think. Sometimes people put out little canopies and stuff like that, but this is mostly commercial activity on the street.
Now, is that something that would count as what we're looking for is, say, a six-foot canopy out towards the, towards the sidewalk? And I think ultimately, if we have a sidewalk, what that's going to require is the building be set back six feet. So like the storefront, if you have a, a portico or some sort of entry or even a canopy, we don't necessarily want it extending over where people are walking. The building's gonna have to move back to have, to have that six-foot protrusion.
Ralph, just to be clear...
Although that's what they do on Church Street, say, for example, we have those glass canopies, like whether or not.
A lot, a lot of these pictures from Boulder are, are on Boulder's Church Street, Church Street equivalent, right? So, I think that's...
A little different.
Yeah, we're not gonna have one of those. We're, we're gonna be creating...
That's the solution to our traffic problem. We're just gonna jump the cars.
We're talking about streetscapes, meaning that there will be a street there, and so I think part of why these, some of these don't...
Register so well.
Register, yeah, is because they're, these buildings are presenting themselves to a, to a pedestrian, you know, environment, and, and we want to sort of have articulation in the building to, to help with what is not a, a full pedestrian mall.
And the, the porches and porticos definitely fits in with the character of...
Well, there's no question that, like with Parkside, that porch where you go in and out, that's a really pleasant feature.
It really is, isn't it? It's funny.
I mean, you could have a couple of rocking chairs in there, I don't know if they do or not, but...
The police station does.
And to take another building that we sometimes say not-so-nice things about, the Obeshaun Plaza, for all of its issues architecturally and aesthetically...
You're undercover a lot.
That little canopy that, that, you know, comes out and allows, you know, provides some differentiation and allows, you know, Obeshaun just put some product display out and all of that, and, and, and so, yeah, I think having that, having that depth is, is, is an important piece of it, if you're not gonna have a storefront, you know, sort of display.
And, and I think the storefront design should be an option.
Right.
But...
Right, if you have that, you don't need to have covered porch and all the rest of that jazz kind of thing.
But I, I do think, you know, we list all those different examples, whether we quite need the 40% of the facade stuff, I'm not so sure.
Should there be any percentage at all, or do we just require...
I think you could dispense with it, and I think you could have two or three illustrations of some of these features that we mentioned as indicative of, hey, here's a nice feature on this building that emphasizes the entrance to it, and here are some illustrations of how one could do that.
Or just photographs of what's our, what we already have. Yeah.
Does that make sense to you, Dennis? Ditch the, ditch the hard number and just illustrate and have the language for the attachment? Okay.
So would an awning qualify as a...
Porch?
Yeah. I mean, it would not be there in the winter, not in Vermont, I wouldn't think.
I think it could.
Cause I could see if some of these buildings had an awning, it would really change the look. And again, this is a city, we're still rural, and do we want to maintain the, the New England village look?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't know about awnings. I'm, because it's a temporary thing, you know, ends up breaking, oh, it's always rolled up and up.
Well, a lot of these buildings, you know, they're more 19th century.
Right.
And they all have a big freeze underneath that little cornice at the top of the first floor. And those freezes are great, they're great for signage, but they're also great for concealing an awning potentially, like this happens to be a south-facing building. So I could see, I don't see an awning there, but you can use that little cornice projection as something that supports an awning. So it shades that glass a little bit, maybe in the middle of the summer, you know. But whether you classify it as a porch, I don't know.
Yeah, so maybe problematic if you, if you, if, if the way you're meeting the standard is through an awning only. In other words, if it's a, if it's a storefront design, then you've already met the standard, and the awning just becomes a bonus. But if you're not a storefront at all, and, and, and you don't have a portico and you, and it's just a door and a, you know, then maybe an awning isn't enough, based on what Maggie was saying. What about depth, though, Maggie? You said you wanted to put your feet in the mud on...
Yeah, I think they, I think they should be usable, and less than six feet is just not usable. And I've, I've seen, you know, sort of faux porches where they're there, but you couldn't really use them, you know.
Yeah.
Put a rocking chair, kick back and...
Is that some of, like, some of the houses in Creekside, their porches?
Hmm, they're four or five feet, they're pretty shallow.
Yeah, I don't know if those are actually usable.
Okay, well, in any case, on the second bullet on entryways, I'm gonna strike the 40% of the facade, hold on to some of the depth, and like all the rest of these, tag this as, you know, illustrations necessary. How about the next bullet on porches and entryways? So the first bullet had to do with these buildings that are not single-family homes and not duplexes. So there's site plan review, and they tend to be larger buildings. This next bullet is specific to single-family homes and duplexes.
I, I, I agree that we should get rid of the percentage. I wonder if we should add wraparound porches as well on all of these, or is that, does that go without saying? I mean, as an option, just wraparound porch.
I don't think you need to say it. If it's, I mean, it's a, a porch is a porch is a porch, right? If it's, if a portion of it wraps around, great, if it doesn't, that's fine too. But this is a, this is, in my mind, this is a pretty, this would be new, to say every new house built in this town that, on the side that faces a street has to have a porch. Or a portico.
Let me see if I can find that... That survey we did to sh, to see how many residences right now have...
Porches?
Porches, and I believe that it's the majority. I'm thinking about the Meadow Mist buildings, they have a little something. I wouldn't call it a porch. I guess it would be a portico. I've seen, I've seen someone sitting out there.
What is Meadow Mist, you guys?
The Norris Project on the south end of the village that's being built.
Oh, okay. Meadow Mist.
I've seen, I've seen.
Well, if you've got it, I guess you use it.
Alright, not finding it.
Well, I can try to put up the street view. In the village now, if you wanna tool around and look.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
So here is. Uh Farmall Drive and street view only gives me a little bit of it, but.
Yeah, those are, those are too narrow, the one on the right might be deep enough, but.
Here, I'll travel back down the street a little bit so you can see better, there's the first house.
Yeah.
From porch?
Yeah, those are too narrow.
But but it exists, right, the porch exists is what I was getting at um. Here's one, porch exists.
But porch existing is not the same as porch being used.
Well, again, thi- this is just an example of an existing neighborhood. Does, as you experience that neighborhood on Halloween, or whenever you happen to stroll through there, does it. Strike you as a, as the type of development design that would inspire. Pride in the future of, you know, or or did 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 they get it, did we get it wrong somehow?
No, I think the the majority of the houses in there do have porches, they're not usable porches, so that cuts down on.
What about uh classic Heinsberg, this is a fairly new development. What about the rest of the town, uh and honestly, I've I've thought a little bit about rural Vermont in general. And I I guess I'm curious whether you would often find. A big front porch, um I know. We always comment that while in Vermont, you everyone, all your friends actually go to the back door.
So you know, you started um. Then you've got the Boujers.
I'll plunk, I'll plunk the street view right there Maggie, hold on.
Yeah, I mean, one after another, uh Jan Stoneberg's has a porch on the side.
Yeah, if there's a historic part of our village, it's this section from. From Mechanicsville Road South, so. As we make our way down the street, there's the Bernard and Gervais building, a little hard to see with the. Sh- the vegetation, but it has a a significant porch here. That wraps around.
House that was renovated, the porch is on the side.
Yeah, that that's.
Yeah, if I scroll over here, I guess you can't see it, cause of the. This is also an older photo with street view, so I I would imagine that that house is. Different, but there's the Bouger House.
The hundred percent. This has got a smaller wraparound, or no, it's not a wraparound, a smaller one, but they still have.
Right here, yeah.
Does it make it a porch because it has a railing?
A porch is a, like a roof, a deck or a patio doesn't have a roof, that's the way I take it.
That helps.
But a porch doesn't have, well, it could have a screen, I guess, you know, sometimes.
So here's another historic house, no porch.
No, it's on the, it, well, it's on the side, so it's on the right side.
Prominent entry though.
And then you get that, the town hall, the um Gilman Gilman Block doesn't have. Uh, anything but um, this one does again on the side.
Right, not on the street facing side.
Yeah, I was going to look to the other end of the street, cause I took a whole bunch of pictures around the Vestry. And I can't find them, of course.
Yeah, here's the house next to the town hall.
Yeah, nothing, nothing there, but across the street, well, that's the one on the side, town hall is. Well, and then the Russells is um.
Hard to see from that angle.
Yeah, there's.
There's the Russell House, so yeah, port, covered porch.
Yeah, Meats is on the side.
Well, it sort of starts in the front, but then wraps, I think.
So Lampman's used to have.
So if we scroll further down here to these homes.
So Drew, the Drews. Um, Jean Drews has both.
Covered porch there, covered porch for the Cone Wrath Law Office, which presents itself as a single family home.
Uh Joe Fallon's does not.
Right here, yeah, it has a, looks like it has a portico above the door.
And then the parish house or whatever the heck it's called.
Yeah, again, it has a, has a covered. Portico.
Across the street.
Yeah, we don't have.
Porches, porches, up and down.
Maybe if you have enough porches around you in other buildings, you're exempted.
Well, what are we learning from this little tour here?
That more how, more homes than not have porches in Heinsberg.
Seems like it's relevant thing to to stick with the.
Yeah, maybe somehow provide some flexibility though. If the, if the porch is immediately adjacent to the street facing side. You know, for these, these, these houses that have a front door, but nothing, nothing dressing it up. But the porch is on, is, you know, right around the corner and.
So a front side or wraparound?
Porch feature. Seems like some leeway.
Well, at least the ones on on the side, like look at the, look at Rob Bass, the green one. So he, so the the side porch, it it still sort of addresses the street, at least part of it.
But it gets pretty modest when it comes along the front, it's really only about two or three feet deep. And like you go to the right here and that brick federal style sort of house, I mean, it'd be rare that you'd ever. Have a porch on a house like that.
Right, although the the addition.
Certainly on the L, you would, but not on a brick elevation of that period, you know. There might have been some little canopy, very delicate, uh sort of over that curved entry piece.
Well, that's a good point, this house.
It just makes you question, uh you know, it's good to give people options, I guess. You know, that the porch could be on the side, that the porch could be on a secondary piece of a house, the porch could be. You know, and how we, how do, how do we do that, how do you write that? Cause clearly sometimes, you know, there's enough houses in this historic part of the village that don't have a prominent. First floor porch.
So. Prominent portico, even though that does not have one.
Well, it's like somebody said, you know, this is typical, they probably rarely go in that front door, and they always go in that side porch. Go in that way. So some flexibility in this, I guess Alex is what.
But not too much. I mean.
You still want, you still want the six feet gap.
Well, say if it's a porch, it must be six feet, if there's a porch. But if there's no porch, maybe that eliminates the requirement, maybe like this. Brick building is a good example, it's a beautiful structure and something that we wouldn't necessarily turn down or I want to exclude. But. It seems like maybe would the point that we that we do want, that we do agree on is. You know, if there's a porch, it should be functional, should be six feet. And the entryway should be prominent. And in which case we can decide what that means, while it's, you know, is this prominent, yes, you know, it's in the center. It's visually pleasing.
So so that, those are two different kinds of concepts, as drafted, it's saying you must have a porch. And we can add flexibility as to, you know, when the, when that porch can be on the side and not. On the street facing side, what you're suggesting Denver would be, you don't have to have a porch. But if you do, we want it to have, you know, meet certain criteria, and then Dennis's question was, why do we care if it's six feet deep? So Maggie, you and Dennis need to argue over that.
Because a fake, a fake porch, that's not deep enough, it's just there for show. And it's not deep enough to to actually sit on, means no one is gonna actually sit on it, and the. The reason for these and the reason I, they they give such character to Heinsberg is because. That's where people sit and greet their neighbors, that's what um, you know, turns a neighborhood. Into a community is when people are interacting with each other on the street, from their homes. Um, it's that interaction rather than just, you know, flat facades where there's no. In, you know, no intention to relate to neighbors um.
My uh, the other portion of that that resonates with me is. No one in the nineteen hundreds, throughout the nineteen hundreds, would have built a house with a porch that they had no intent of using. So, you know, traditional Heinsberg, if you were gonna build a porch, you intended to spend some time out there and you wouldn't make it. Three feet deep, where you have to back your rocking chair into it.
Back then, we had a dirt road and there was. Model Ts going down through there, not forty-five hundred cars going down through there, sit, I don't picture myself sitting on one sixteen watching.
They are also set back quite a bit, I mean, we measured them our last meeting. Like the uh, the Wainer, the Wainer House.
But your point Dennis is, are are we designing for a function that is no longer. Um, we're no longer actively using, I I think that on one sixteen, you're probably right. I I don't, I don't frequently see anybody out on their one sixteen porches. But on the other roads that these design standards would apply to, interior roads. Well, probably you would, right, cause those roads aren't gonna see this level of traffic and and gravel trucks coming from Heinsberg sand and gravel and. And that sort of thing.
Forty years from now, who knows what's gonna be moving up and down those roads, so.
So where did we land on the? Just define how a porch, define what a porch, the specifications of a porch versus. Require the porch. Again, this is drafted to require the porch. Uh, do you want it to still do that, but with some more flexibility about um side porches and the like?
Well, shall have an open porch or portico.
Right, doesn't have to be a porch, it can be a a covered um, you know, entryway over the door.
If it is a porch, it needs to be six feet deep.
But then period there and you can lose the.
We could require a porch, but not require it be on the front facade, it could be on either side or the front. Um, which we've seen here and it, you know, it's visible.
And and, yeah, may, maybe on visible, maybe on the side. With one side visible to the. Um, to the street or.
I can work on that language, you know, visible and with a clear functional connection to. This, the street.
Planning speak, you are fluent in planning speak.
Yeah, well, temper that when you see the next draft, cause we wanna, we do want it to be in.
And you must have chairs on the.
And plants, right, and terrariums. Oh heck, you gotta have a cat and dog too.
Oh, that's in a different section, but yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I think Alex, you know, an open porch or portico facing the street or the side yards. Or some such language.
Alright, um, how about this garage setback, that this is um, we have garage setback requirement in the regs right now. So this, the concept isn't breaking new ground, but there's some planner person made a whole bunch more words uh in here to go with it. The current setback required uh for garages is ten feet, so. This language is the same as what we currently have, we have waived this. Um, well, so the Thistle Hill development, when that was approved. Uh, requested waivers so that they could have the garages setback less than ten feet, uh as long as they did. Architecturally relevant uh design that would help minimize the garage. Um, in favor of the rest of the building, so there were overhangs and porches and the like. You may look at that development and say that was a, that was a bad choice to waive that, or you may look at it and say, yeah, that works. Um, the Farmall Drive neighborhood did not get a waiver on that, and so I believe that those. Houses do have the garage setback in all cases from the main face of the house.
Yeah, yeah, I think they are.
What I, what I was trying to do with the additional language was to address um. Underbuilding parking, you know, the um.
After you have parking below grade, say garage under the house, so to speak, yet facing the street. It's exempt, that's the way I took it.
There's also a sentence that deals with the raised ranch, so above grade attached garages that are below the first floor elevation of the principal structure. Need not meet the standard, I guess that's not necessarily a raised ranch, cause the first floor elevation is. Is the um, is the garage elevation.
It's like, what's it called, that neighborhood again, Thistle Hill? There's some garages. That are flush with the street elevation or street facade of a house. But in some cases, because of the hilly nature of that development.
Yeah, that.
The garages are down on a lower level. I think, you've certainly seen that sort of thing.
But our cur- what our current regs don't do is address the raised ranch very well. So it would be nice to address that, if that's even a building style that we anticipate seeing. No, that was a, that was a period kind of construction, I don't know that there's a whole lot of that going on anymore.
Well, there's one. Just out on Mechanicsville.
Well, the garage is around the.
Yeah, it's on the side right there.
I don't know, it might make a comeback, it's a very economical way to build.
Why is that?
Well, because.
Costs so much money, you might as well have it be livable.
Yeah, so typically a raised ranch is uh four feet of that ranch is underground. Which is basically the depth of a frost wall required in our climate, so you've gotta have the four feet anyway. So now what you've done is you've made that. So now what you've done is you've made that four feet, four or five foot high wall. And then the. From there to the first floor, that's a floor. So you've really saved on foundation, you're in essence using the basement and exposing part of the basement to the outside. So it's a cheap way to build a floor, is the gist of it. Makes sense?
It does. How are you getting up there? I couldn't get up there.
I have my ways.
No, come on now. Oh, I gotcha.
So again, this, I'm just showing you an example where this standard was not met and they requested a waiver and and received it. Cause you can see this, this, or maybe you can see that garage is not um, you know, ten feet back, it's.
Yeah, they recessed it some.
Yeah, it, they're all recessed some, and then they, again, they're supposed to have sort of mitigating architectural features.
It'd be hard if it was. Stuck back ten feet, you know what I mean, you wouldn't be able to walk through. Or an extra bedroom or something.
And so these are very different from um, again, the newer development, but. The the Farmall Drive neighborhood.
What do they do? Break it up with putting that big? Thing in front of the front door? Looks like all the houses have. A big entryway. Was that something that broke up not having the garage?
Here in the Farmall Drive neighborhood?
No.
Oh, back up in Thistle Hill? I don't know. But can you, can you sort of see the difference here? How much further the garages sit back?
Is, are those ten feet?
My, yeah, my recollection is they complied. Because the the front facade is, you know, uh, right here. And that garage is quite a ways back.
I actually prefer the. The Thistle Hill with the. Really inviting front, front doors and.
There's a lot more impervious surface here.
What uh, what drew us to? What appeals about garage setback? To begin with, how did this?
So it's in the regs now and and it's in this draft, um, because generally speaking. We want, we want uh. The. The human side of the building to present itself to the street and not the, not the automotive side of the building and garage doors tend to be blank walls. Yeah. It's, yeah, it's sort of like keeping the, ju- trying not to put the utility boxes and and all of that front and center. Not to say we have to keep it, but it is something that we've had in the regs, it's typical in a lot of other towns. You know, a traditional Vermont um. Home was built with the house up front and the garage, you know, setback, maybe added on to an L, you know, in the house uh, at one point. I think it actually does a good job of, the standard does in this particular neighborhood. Regardless of what you think of the narrow porches, of of putting the, you know, the front face of the building. In in your face, as opposed to um, I wish I could find a, a, an example. Some of the snout house style uh, construction where instead of uh. Instead of this part of the building. You know, coming out closest to the street, the garage actually comes out closest to the street. Which, you know, from a, from a design standpoint, I I I understand why engineers like to design them because, you know, you're designing for a car. You just pull right in and the first thing you zoom into is your garage, and then of course you walk into your house from inside the garage. But um, that's what, that's what the standard seeks to avoid.
You'd be amazed driving around this town if you've ever had to drive around this town and randomly knock on doors. And how many people, how you, you pull up and there's no way to. There's no nor to, there's no door to knock on, you know, there, it's, you know, there's a, there's a closed garage door and you know, that's how the people get inside. But the front doors are blocked off or not, not used and there's no other way to. Aside from throwing a rock at the window, it's like there's no, nothing to knock on and.
Right, which I think to Dennis's point makes you feel like functionally like, well, then why do we, why are we worried about this design standard? But the difference in my mind is that when I pull up to your house, Dennis, at the end of a long driveway. Whatever, right, but there isn't. Your house is not part of the street.
No, it's not, and there's not the expectation.
Right, whereas these houses are and there's a different sort of pedestrian feel to it, it's not all just cars driving up to these houses.
No, I appreciate that it's not a monolithic. Facade with the, the garage door in line with the, with the house, um, this is much more successful than that. For sure.
Yeah, we're on that last bullet under entryway or uh, sorry, not entries, under uh, front facades, garage setback. So Rolf, can you just look at that last sentence in this bullet where it says above grade attached garages? They're below the first floor elevation, principal structure need not meet the standard. I think I dr- I think I wrote that thi- assuming that that's the. That's, it doesn't necessarily have to be a raised ranch, but it's that model where you have a home where, you know. One half of the first floor is garage and the other half of the first floor is house. Does that?
Well, the only.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, the only um. You know, frequently, it's almost a building code issue now where the elevation of the garage. Has to be below the elevation of the main floor of the house. So that if gasoline leaks out of a car, say for example. Uh, it's contained in the garage, so. You know, above grade attached garages that are below the first floor elevation of the principal structure need not meet the standard, well. In reality, they have to be. Uh, typically. By the building code, we're supposed to follow, they have to be six or eight inches below that anyway. So. I think you're talking about something that's more significantly below. The first floor elevation of the house. Than six inches, say for example. But it doesn't say that. It just says below, well, below is a half an inch. Picky, picky, picky. So I don't know how you.
I I I was just trying to cover the bases of the different, different house types and I'm not sure now that I'm.
Attached garages that are significantly below the first floor elevation of the principal structure, need not meet the standard. Significantly is. Not a definitive word. But maybe it conveys the intent.
Okay.
Muse on that one. Maybe. There's no question that when the garage, like some of the ones you showed in Thistle Hill, are below the main level of the house, even if. They're in the same. Front elevation of the house, it tends to minimize the garage, now some of that is the landscaping that's required in order to get you up to the. Front door, you know. From the garage level.
Were most of the garages in Thistle Hill, like for one car, were these? Creekside.
They were one and two. Seems. Or at least the photos that Alex just showed. In one case, there was one garage at one elevation and another garage door and another elevation, did I see that right?
How do you mean?
Well, you know, sometimes you drive in. When you drive up to the house, you don't even see the garage door or something.
Right.
Would that make a difference?
I I think it would, yeah, if the garage is not facing the street, it's facing the side yard, then.
The garage door is not facing the street.
Oh yeah, that's a good point. It's the garage door that, you're right.
Is that what we're worried about? Is the garage door or the garage?
Yeah, the way it's been worded in, in our current regs and the way this is worded, it's the garage, but I, I do wonder if it's really the garage door. So let me show you an example of that.
I mean, across from CPU, there's one of them. Is that a single family house?
The one we were just looking at? I think so, yes. But a big one.
Has a condo look to it, doesn't it?
So these two houses were, were built. Not too long after or bef- or around the same time as the houses on Mulberry Lane, which is sort of the first phase of the Thistle Hill thing. Think there were mobile homes here before, anyways, um, these houses. Actually, I shouldn't say these houses, no, yeah, it's both of them. So these houses have garages.
On the side?
Right here, so that, that to Dennis's point, this is a garage, it faces the street. But the entrance to it is facing the side yard. And so it doesn't look like a garage.
But what we're worried about is. Um, the facade. And so the garage door doesn't really come into play when we're looking at the front of the house. Do we wanna say, does that, it then fall into, well, we don't want a garage there, a garage wall there that's twenty four feet long with no windows in it? Do we consider it part of the house? Does it need, need to have windows in it or? Does it need to be set back? Does the face of the facade of that? Garage need to be set back ten feet even though there's no door in it?
Well, by the way this is written, that garage would have to be back ten feet.
Right.
Doesn't seem necessary, does it?
Well, it is set back some, but.
This one is, but like, look at the, it's maybe it's a little hard to see, but look at the yellow house.
It's ready in line with the front of the house.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's two gar- two car garage.
But it's got windows facing the street.
Yep.
Right, when you look at the, when I scroll down the street, there's the house.
Oh yeah, there's the windows.
So.
Which, which seems compliant, it seems fine.
Even though.
Yeah, I just figure out some wording to make this permissible. Only has to set back ten feet if the garage door is in the front. Facing the front. Yeah. Maybe that's all you say.
Thanks for that.
Too easy to understand.
I'm not a man of a lot of words.
Got it.
So what have you got?
Lots of notes, I'll give you, I'll give you another draft when we uh, when we re- review it again. If you wanna move on to the third standard, that's rear and side parking and this, as I mentioned last time, is easy if you want it to be. I, we talked about it maybe being sufficient when our current regs say, and I looked at it and felt like our current regs were sufficient. We're, we're pretty clear about. No, you know, limited front yard parking, um. So if you're okay with that, I'm, I'm proposing we don't need to make any more design standards, we can just go with what we have.
No objections here?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Street grid was um, was one of yours, Rolf, this number four. So um, the id- the, the concept was that we wanna have a grid of streets to the extent we can in new development. And that we. We're interested in trying to cap or close the views at the end of certain streets, not necessarily every street. So there's some proposed language about. Streets being arranged to connect the other streets to form a grid to the extent possible. And then the second sentence about streetscapes, including a principal structure opposite the terminus of a street. At an intersection in order to cap or close the view. Dead end streets shall be avoided, only allowed with, at the discretion of the DRB. What do you think, Rolf? Does that? It's, there's not a lot of specificity in there, but does it capture what you were after and if so, does everybody think it's worth having in there? And Rolf, tell me if you've got a picture or there's a place in our town or some other Chittney County town I can show.
Yeah, what was your, what was your concern here? With this?
What was my concern? Well, um, there's a real, you know, I think. Uh, as a factor of privacy, people love dead end streets. Or cul-de-sacs. And as opposed to being able to sort of link up. Um, which is much more of the kind of traditional patterns of streets and. Uh, approachable neighborhoods, as opposed to, you know, enclaves. And then also um, as far as just. The views are concerned, sometimes, you know, this is somewhat subjective, I guess. Sometimes you're driving down a street. And there's a beautiful view at the end of that street, there doesn't need to be. I mean, one of the better examples was just down the way here when um. When the second phase of uh. What's it called?
The Heinsberg Center project?
Heinsberg Center project was, you know, they um, had it arranged and I expected better, actually. Um, they had it arranged such that that existing parking lot between Kinney's. And um. Uh, parkside. Which heads in a westerly direction, when you got to the new development, that parking lot kept going. And it was in my estimation, a place where the view should have been stopped. And the parking swung off axis, or there needed to be a building between it, so that when you're standing in that parking lot or even out on the sidewalk on. Main Street, Route one sixteen. You look through this slot between the two buildings and all you saw was a football length field parking lot. So I would have taken the first part of that parking lot, left it, then put a building to terminate that view. And then figured out the parking in some different fashion. So that was the gist of that one.
I, I think that, you know, having connecting streets, trying to achieve a grid, that's all. Pretty straightforward, you know, planning, design, nothing, nothing to see here in terms of, you know. Controversy or unusual, it's this capping the view at the end of s- of streets that I think is a new concept. That, that I wanna make sure everybody understands and is.
Yeah, and some would say, well, maybe not something you always wanna do. Because when somebody at night drives down the street and your house is at the end of that view, and they've got their headlights on you, coming the whole way. You might say. But you know, insofar as the placement of public buildings, say we have a community center or something in the. You know, I think those are perfect structures to kind of. Put in prominent places where lots of people will see them.
Oh, and your mention of the. Streetlights at night.
Face the building so that wouldn't happen.
Yeah, or maybe it needn't always be a building.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, they had some open space in that, as I remember Alex. They could have, say for example, had that first stretch of parking lot and then had a really nice play space. You know, with some three dimensionality to it, you know, a play structure or something. And then maybe continued the parking. So needn't always be like a house or a building or something, but. We, we don't, you know, none of us have really enjoyed these vast expanses of parking that you find uh, you know, in.
Yeah, I was just, I mean, that phrase just went through my head, vast expanses of parking.
So they changed that, actually. So here we got this right now, this parking area. And they continued it on right there, as opposed to maybe turning that building, you know, or putting. This open space right there and running this building further or something like that. You know, is a good illustration. Cause this distance, this is probably what, thirty feet, forty feet? You know, that's a sea of parking right there. And it's nice that it's between the buildings and all that. And ultimately this does. Block the view, it's just sort of, you know, creating parking lots that are sort of nicely scaled. They're too big, you know.
Not like you're at Walmart.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Keep, keep in mind, you know, the way this is worded, it deals with streetscapes, not parking lots, so like in this particular example. Those two parking lots are just that. Not, they're not part of the streetscape, um, so what would be? What this standard would probably be more applicable to, just the way it's worded now, not, we can change the wording. Is. You know, a street like this one.
Yep.
Should end.
Should something.
Something should. Something should be there.
Yep.
And that's sort of a public space.
This street should end and something should be there. That sort of thing. And and I'm, I'm. You haven't won me over, Ralph, with it, but I wrote it cause you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, then.
You thought it was a good, good idea and I I'm still wrapping my head around it.
Like, I'm, like, this is just a bad move.
Yeah.
All right, if I did that in architecture school. All right? And so I expect better from the person who's laying this out. Okay? And so should the DRB. And what kind of terminology or wording we use?
Yes.
To mandate that, you know? I hate to sound harsh, but call his baby.
Yeah, what do you call it?
Yeah, I don't understand. Why you want something when you come down at the end of the street?
Well, here, I mean, this is part of a nice. It's kinda wet out there, isn't it?
That's supposed to be a public space.
This is a park, so I could see some sort of a nice, you know, culminating street feature. You know, maybe some playground equipment or something. This, this goes right into somebody's backyard over here, as I remember.
Yeah.
And this, this at least next down and, you know? Cause this is sort of the alleyway into the, so you want it to block the view of the lights. Is that where you're?
A little bit.
But it's less about blocking headlights with a structure than it is, um.
Infinity and beyond, yeah.
Restraining the view so that you feel like you're in an enclosed.
Yeah, you're in a snug little neighborhood.
As opposed to sort of bleeding out.
Yeah.
But I, but I have to say, I mean. That is not, I I I'm sorry, you you did measure how. The the length of tho- those two parking lots. But it it isn't a vast, I mean, as you said, it's not, it's not a Walmart parking lot.
No.
It's a.
Not yet.
Yeah.
I wonder if we have other. Streets with those, you know, that we could look at that have that feature to them in the village.
Well, we want the best development we can have. And if it's not built yet.
Yeah.
Why not try to achieve it? Make it attractive, make it inviting.
Well, we don't have, you know, that kind of development has not been. A feature of our town. You know, we've got. Uh, development along a main street. We've got a few side streets. But we don't like have gridded street areas, perhaps other than maybe Creekside.
But I mean, there's certain areas that it's tough to do, like NRG.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? That would be hard to grid that.
Yep. No, you're right.
And I think above, they're gonna put a development up there. I think there was a cul-de-sac up there, I believe.
Yeah, on the top of the hill.
It would be hard to.
Yeah.
I mean.
The Quinn property.
Open field, yeah, that's pretty easy, but.
The Quinn property is the same way when that, when that Quinn property, if that Quinn property gets developed on the east side of Mechanicsville Road.
Yes.
It it'll be somewhat difficult because of the topography to to grid that neighborhood out.
It will.
I mean, you could do some of it, but I mean, I think some of it would have to have cul-de-sac.
But this is a fairly level area right there where we're looking at and, you know, I you 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 go to other towns and, you know, like. Back, back of House Bristol or Virgins, or even like Burlington, you know, the uh, the whole Seven Sisters neighborhood. I don't know.
Colchester has a lot of cul-de-sacs.
That Seven Sisters neighborhood, there are a lot of lessons in that neighborhood, cause those lots are not too unlike. The size of these lots that we're looking at in Creekside, say for example, or even the residential lots there. On Heinsberg Village. And the way those streets are laid out, they all interconnect. There are multiple ways of getting from one place to another.
I just think cul-de-sacs, that kind of brings the neighborhood together. All the kids like to play in the cul-de-sac. You know what I mean? Like over across from Rice Lumber, I think there's quite a few cul-de-sacs out in there.
Yeah, it'd be one thing if they had connectivity between them, but when it, when they become a dead end and you can't get from. That little one to the one that's, you know, two hundred feet over, it becomes. Odd, awkward, as opposed to a a grid where you you can do that.
And if it's something like a U, it would qualify. Uh, it wouldn't necessarily be a cul-de-sac if you drive down one road and across and then back. It's grid, essentially, but you. You know, you aren't necessarily routing traffic through there though, which kind of, it's is the, you know. One of the nice things about having a cul-de-sac.
Ralph, here's Seven Sisters, I think, uh.
Yeah, sort of in there behind D O R dot com. Yeah, Callahan Park sort of terminates it at the south. So if you go to like Satellite View or wherever it is, yeah.
So you like.
Here's some green space and it's kind of this neighborhood in here. And uh. You know, there are some side streets. When you get up here, a lot of these streets sort of terminate in other streets, but they're all contiguous, you know? You can get anywhere you wanna go.
I think the key is grid.
And here, there aren't structures, you know, at the ends of those streets, but there is sort of a public amenity that's for everybody.
It's a nice little neighborhood.
It's a great little neighborhood.
But you're right, you know, there are many parts of our town where the topography is so. You 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 can't do that.
Well, we also have, um, I'm thinking of the the west side of one sixteen, which is more, which is flat. And maybe would lend itself more to the. Um, to the grid, but also to potentially capping views, but. Our regs right now talk about wanting to um, shift the views of the La Platte sort of.
Yeah.
Valley. From where we're gonna lose them on one sixteen. Right now, you're coming on one sixteen from Burlington into Heinsberg and you. You know, before you get to NRG, you're sort of high and you're you're looking down on that whole field out towards the Bissinette Rec area. And you can see La Platte, you can actually see all the way out to Levensworth and, you know, where.
Some of those hills.
Charlotte Road goes in there. We're gonna lose some of those views as buildings get built. Um, in the Village Northwest District. And the way our regs read now, we say we wanna recapture some of those views from the internal streets. So that as you, as people walk and, and the and the only way to do that is to have, is to not cap some of those.
That's true.
Those those street ends with buildings, but actually allow them to to look out on what's beyond.
Yeah, I.
Well, maybe we don't wanna say what I.
Well, I I mean, I I wonder about. Because I I think just having, having a grid and having, having that connectivity. Um, is there anything that we wanna say about? Parking, you know, expanses of parking, because some of these. Areas that are gonna have, you know, the multi-use.
Yeah.
Buildings and and parking and.
Well, remember, we've, what we've said about it is what we're regs currently say, where it should be located. Um, you know, in the rear yard, in the side yard, not in the front yard. And then we go on in our. Landscaping section of site plan review to talk about having islands and trees planted within the parking areas and. Providing shade and all that. So we don't say anything about how big a parking area can or can't be. You could have very large parking areas. Um, but we do talk about how they're supposed to be mitigated through landscaping and placement.
Well, we do say the minimum. Don't we? Don't you have to have certain amount of parking spaces per?
We don't actually, what we, what we provide is a, is a guideline. And then we, and then we say that it's, it's the DRB's job to determine how much is necessary. And it's the applicant's job to explain, you know, to make a proposal based on the use. We used to have, we used to have requirements and we got rid of those in favor of, let's make it a conversation. So that, like, for example, in Hannahford's case, our guidelines recommended a lot less parking than they proposed. And they said, we understand our business, we need at least this much parking to make it work. Or vice versa, um.
Most developers don't wanna spend the money on parking.
Most of the time, it's the other way around. The developer's like, your regs say I have to build this much parking and I don't need that much. Uh, please don't make me build. Our regs give you the ability to make that determination. I I was just saying earlier today that there's, there was a report, I think it was on the Strong Towns, um. Weekly thing, talking about uh, uh, analysis of parking in the US and that. The US has something like two billion parking spaces, you know, in struck, in um, parking lots. For whatever we have, two hundred million cars or or something like that. Um, so we're just, overall, we're just vastly over, we've built way more parking than we actually need in in aggregate.
Yeah, they're all the grocery stores for that one day before Thanksgiving.
Right. Yeah, everything is designed for the absolute peak, maybe the, before we expire to Christmas and. Yeah.
Yeah.
Why don't you let, give me a chance to rewrite this a little bit?
Okay.
Okay.
I will make that note.
And what I, just so you know, what I might say is something like streetscape shall include a principal structure. A site feature or a natural landscape view or something akin to that. Opposite the terminus of a street at an intersection. In order to shape and enliven the view at the end of the street, something like, it's not very well written, but. Something like that.
Okay. Get it to me when you, when you do it and I'll add it to the next draft.
Okay, dog.
And and it might be the, the only place in our regs where we have the word enliven.
Enliven?
Yes.
Oh, all right then. You know me, I'm a party guy.
Yeah.
You pay attention to that. I got, I got compliments from another planner when he, for some reason was reading our regs. And saw the word uh, creamy stand. And said, I've never seen a set of regs that, that actually had the word, you know. Referred to a creamy stand in it. So if you put the right words in, people will notice.
People notice.
Creamy stand.
Not all people, planners.
Yeah, the ones that matter.
Planners.
Right.
Okay.
We're all nerds in our own way, come on, nerd culture. We gotta, we gotta embrace our, our nerdiness.
Okay. So fantastic. So we've gone through what you.
Yeah, that's all I have for you and you, you're out of time anyway. So the next meeting, we'll have uh. Revised versions of what we talked about, but hopefully we won't, we won't move backwards and review them again. We'll sort of wait. And we'll move forward and talk about um, the still to be drafted numbers, five, six, seven, and so on.
Okay.
Okay.
Whatever you've got, we'll look over it.
I can't wait for architectural variety.
Fantastic.
You helped draft it, so you're.
Alex, I have a question. After all our discussion about location of garage doors, the haystack. Some of it planned has alleys behind the houses.
Yes.
So will they be entering garages from there?
Yes.
So, so we need the porticoes and the porches for that. But it's a little late for what we're doing now.
Well, the idea with that is that the, the front of the houses that face the actual street would wanna have the porticoes and porches. Um, and the garage issue becomes moot because the garages will be in the back. We, it's a good point, though, we probably do want to put something in there about those situations where. Because I suppose somebody could look at it strictly and say, well, you're calling it an alley, but it's really just two streets and the house fronts on both sides. When really the, you you've met the objective, you know, by by having that back rear entrance off an alley. Hard to write words that capture every possible scenario.
Single possible.
Which is one reason why I think in this section, we'll have to look. There was a time where we did a bunch of work on these things where we added a waiver provision and we gave the DRB the flexibility to. Bend and wiggle if there were extenuating circumstances or unforeseen or that, as long as it wasn't violating the intent.
Yeah. All right, minutes. Has everyone had a chance to look through the minutes?
No, I didn't.
Did anyone notice that I wrote the wrong date on that?
I did, I was waiting for them to figure it out.
I figured that out.
It was not February eleven.
No, it's not.
Is that why you got fired?
Yeah.
See, they're high standard. You better get the day right.
Oh, well, at least the year. I mean, you got the year right, so we're, we're good. Okay, any changes, additions, recommendations, criticism? No.
We're gonna have elections shortly, so if you wanna challenge Maggie for to to be the chair of this board.
We do minutes at the end, Dennis. They do them at the beginning.
At the DRB, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I will say to Dennis's, in Dennis's defense, that that, that's pretty customary in other boards that I've. Worked with or been to, the minutes happen at the front end.
Well, as long as people read the minutes before the meeting, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, uh, if no. If no changes or additions, um, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I wasn't here, so.
You can vote with the majority.
Okay, I vote with the majority.
All righty, great. Okay, and then, um, any other, other business?
I have one thing to bring up, maybe. Um, I don't know. Um, some of you were here when we presented a few of those notions about, uh, the, um. The Drew's property across the street where the used car lot and um, locomotion is.
Yeah, that section.
The abandoned building and. It's a good conversation, I thought. I don't think they were necessarily supportive, but nonetheless. I was on some jury last year. Where a lot of young architects in the state of Vermont were competing for uh, uh, sort of a prize. And they were doing it at Middlebury and at Norwich University. Some of them were students and some of them were younger architects. And they were, they, I was the uh, person on the chair of the jury, you could say. We had two or three other architects. And we went around and decided which were the good, supposedly the good projects and um. And then we also had to decide what project were they going to do? Well, that project that. I fussed around with on my own, we turned into the pro- the design project for these students. And they didn't do anything like what I expected. They did some very interesting things. And some of them, actually, one of the best ones that won first prize. Was done by a young couple here in Heinsberg. I think that was just happenstance, cause they're both very thoughtful and. And I thought, I, you know, the last thing I'd wanna do is rub salt in the Drew's. You know, notions about that piece of property. It's their land, but it does come under our purview insofar as just. Hey, what kind of zoning adjustments might ultimately be made, you know? Anyway, there were like three or four really interesting projects, way beyond what you would ever think might surface. It wouldn't conform to much of what we've been talking about, I might say. But I thought it'd be a really entertaining and interesting conversation sometime. To have three or four of those groups come and present their ideas.
Oh, I would love that.
And it'd be fun for them and it would also be, um. I, good for us and, and any other interested members of the public. But as I said, I don't wanna like aggravate people's states of mind.
I wonder, Ralph, if it would be just as effective and less official. Um, if it wasn't done at a planning commission meeting.
Just a public forum or something.
Library as sort of an interesting architectural design presentation. Um, and 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 then it doesn't sort of carry the policy weight. And if they are as avant garde or, um, you know, interesting as you described, sort of outside the bounds of what our regulations are even. Contemplating, might make more sense to do it in that than you.
Okay, we could organize something like that.
Well, that kind of feels.
No, that's a good suggestion, Alex. No, that's a good suggestion, Alex.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, yeah, I would love to, I would love to see that. This was from January where UVM did something similar, they had. Architecture students design. Some spaces in Burlington, which I thought was really fascinating.
Yeah, that, fair amount of that goes on, you know, hypothetical situations done in real locations, say for example. Well, I, I say provocative, um, several of these notions were somewhat provocative, but. In a both stimulating and interesting way. It addressed some real issues having to do with how things grow, you know, like a community like ours. Actually fairly sophisticated, uh, notions. Not that you'd like them necessarily, but, uh, they, they made some really nice.
That would be a great conversation to have, just.
Well, why don't I just organize that and take Alex's suggestion and just do it in a venue that differs from ours? Okay. Alrighty.
On that provocative notion front, we had a department head meeting today and, um. We were talking to, uh, um, I was talking to Al Barber about, um, the haystack project and. The three-story buildings, I won't go into the details, so you don't have to run away, Dennis, but, uh, as a DRB member. But his, his comment was, um, when we get the aerial truck, um, that's supposed to replace engine two. In three or four years, um, that will allow the fire department to access taller buildings. Either to get on the roof to fight the fire or to get people out of a, of a window that they cur- currently can't reach with their twenty-eight foot ladders. He said. Wouldn't that enable taller buildings that could achieve what? The planning commission has been talking about for a lot of years with more density and, um, less impervious surface, like you could. If you've got buildings that right now have to spread out and, and cover more. Ground and therefore have more stormwater runoff, you know, couldn't you minimize that by going up? And I said, yes, that's a conversation for another day, um, but it was just interesting to hear our fire chief. You know, have that sort of a, uh, thought about, um. Impervious surface and how, you know, the ability to go vertical, uh, has benefits on that front as well.
But then you look at Williston, what's happening at Tap Corners.
I know.
They went up.
It seems like once you go over three stories, it becomes dicey, uh, but maybe with the right design. But, but you're right, Barb, I mean, and that's what I told Al, is that, you know, like, we're a rural village and I think people always want us to be that. I don't think people want us to become, uh, city center in South Burlington or, um, so, anyway.
He wants a truck.
He very much wants a truck.
Very much wants the truck, yeah.
My grandson wants that truck too.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
Could I just mention, thank you guys for letting me fifteen minutes, this is my last meeting.
This is the last meeting?
And hopefully I'll see you guys, um, at, we're Conservation Commission, I'm now the chair, we're holding a meeting March ninth. Uh, to review the draft of the natural resources inventory. Um, hopefully some of you guys can be there or one or representative.
I just checked for.
March ninth, six P M, third floor, um, we'll just be looking at paper draft and hopefully reviewing some of the before that.
Can't wait to see it.
Yeah.
You put a ton of work into that, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so if there's nothing else, that ends the meeting, thank you, everybody.
Okay.